Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Elmont Village Township Hall. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Elmont Village Council, November 4th, 2025, to order. Please rise for a pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. Roll call, please.
President Dyke.
Present.
President Protim Stoffler.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman. Councilmember Glasser.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Councilmember Powell.
Present.
Councilmember Schneider.
Present.
Do we have any additions or revisions from tonight's agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Schneider, supported by President Protim Stoffler, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sign. Motion passes unanimously by all councilmembers present. Communications, Homecoming Committee meeting minutes.
We saw these. We discussed one of our last one. And it didn't even kind of occur to me when I was looking at it the first time, but I notice now, in order for it to, I believe for it to be home make compliant. And if it's not, I think it's just a good idea that we make sure when we have discussion on previous, because I don't think it was in the previous one either. Just want to make sure that we remind them to continue doing like they did on this one, where who the motions are made by, who they're seconded by, what the vote totals are, and when they do it, just consistent with normal meeting minutes.
The Homecoming, or the Sinclair Project update? Let me rephrase that. Homecoming Committee meeting minutes from October 7th was the first item. The Sinclair Street project was the second item. And the Homecoming meeting minutes from October 31st were the third item. Does anybody have any questions, comments on any of the communications that were presented today? If not, we'll move on to consent agenda. Regular meeting minutes, October 21st.
I had just one correction. It was on approval of agenda, right there on page one. It was Councilmember Schneider who moved, and it was President Protim Stoffler who seconded, not Mr. Feldman.
On the consent agenda?
Correct. Oh, no, well, approval of agenda.
Of the agenda.
Approval of agenda, correct. Consent agenda, the second version, that is correct. It's the one prior to that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on minutes? General Fund? Meeting Street Fund. Local Street Fund. Parks and Recreation Fund. Downtown Authority Fund. Sewer Fund. Water Fund. Payroll Register Report. Water Report. There's no other comments or questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Consent agenda approval, motion by President Protim Stoffler, supported by Councilmember Schneider to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously by all councilmembers present. Now is the time in our agenda for public comment for any item on the agenda. Do we have any public comment tonight? Being done, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Second reading and adoption ordinance 209.
Put it in your packet. Is the ordinance number 209. We had a first reading on it, October 7th. It was published in the Tri-City Times on October 15th as required. And I'm requesting you hold a second reading and adopt ordinance number 209 as presented.
You sure we don't want to start adding, you know, some quiet hours and some local noise expectation? That seems to get a lot of people to show up with interest. Nobody seems to care about this right now, so.
Was it put on Facebook page or any other method of communication, or only Tri-City Times?
Tri-City Times.
We're not going to discuss or find out anything about the signage that we discussed until we pass it. Is that correct essentially? I know we talked about it a little bit. DPW is going to look into it and kind of assist, but I'm assuming that's not going to happen until we pass it?
Correct. Basically, we'll be putting one sign on all four corners, just like we did with the Jake break.
Anybody else on council have anything further? Do we have a motion?
I will make the motion that we adopt ordinance number 209, the off-road vehicle ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Schneider, supported by Councilmember Miller, to approve ordinance number 209 as presented, second reading. This is roll call, correct? Since it's an ordinance? Or no? No, okay. My bad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes with one dissent by, with Mindy dissenting. Agenda item number two, Homecoming Committee Appointment. So for logistics sake, we have one resign and one add. And then one didn't want to resign until the one was definitely added. So do we do the add first and then accept the resign? Or do we accept the resign and then do the add?
You have to resign first. We can't fill out in the existing officer position that's not.
Okay. So in your packet, you have a letter from Wheezy Lagon to Paula, the Homecoming Committee Chair, asking for formal resignation as treasurer on the Homecoming Committee Board, effective once the committee is able to appoint a replacement. So we'd have to entertain a motion to accept that resignation, correct?
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. I disagree. This is the only reason why. What you're doing is absolutely our normal process for all our other boards.
Okay.
The, accepting the resignation would be conflicting with our current bylaws. My point is, is it's not up to us. Our current bylaw language, unrevised, the only version we've ever passed, says any officer or member may resign by submitting written notice to the committee chairperson. Such resignation shall take effect immediately or at a date specified in the resignation notice. So my point is, is it's not up to us to adopt. And we can, but it's nothing more than a feel-good motion because it's, they have the authority to submit directly to the chair.
So as soon as we appoint Steve, her resignation goes into effect?
Well, because that's right, because she gave a later date. Right? She said she wanted to hold that position until replacement. So we pick him as the replacement. It's effective immediately. Normally, our bylaws for all our other boards do say we have to formally accept that resignation. This one just says it's effective immediately. So we don't really have oversight or authority in that matter. They get to resign. They submitted it exactly how they were supposed to.
So by being in the packet, it's on the record as a resignation. Does council agree with that? So agenda item number two, Homecoming Appointment Committee, Mr. Zott. Would you like to come up and make a presentation?
Make a presentation?
We thought you had a PowerPoint.
But I appreciate your consideration to add me to the Homecoming Court. For those who don't know me, Steve Zott, been in the area forever. Jen and I raised our family here. Just ended a long 45-year career in education, most of it in administration. About 25 here with the Elmont Schools, and then another 15 with the Lepira Intermediate School District, most of those as the superintendent in those two places. With that, so, because I am interested in serving as the treasurer if that all works out. Have a background in finance, primary responsibility, budget with the school districts. Have been on a number of finance committees with boards I serve on. So I think that I can do a good job, give you the information that you need to feel confident that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. I did take note, Mr. Schneider, that we probably need to clean up some formal actions that we do with. I'm very familiar with Robert's rules, so we'll do better. Other than that, I'm open to any questions you might have.
I think it's unfair that we don't have any questions for you because your reputation precedes itself. So I don't think we all want to question you on your CV, so.
No about that. I've been known to talk, so questions, I tend to get going, so.
If we have no questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept Mr. Zott's appointment to the Homecoming Committee as treasurer.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Stephen Zott to, or as treasurer of the Homecoming Committee.
Support.
Motion by President Protim Stoffler, supported by Councilmember Miller, to appoint Mr. Steve Zott as the treasurer to the Elmont Homecoming Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously by all councilmembers present. Thank you, Steve. Thanks for your involvement. How's Jamie doing?
She just gave me grandchild number four.
Awesome.
She's busy.
Agenda item number three, Employee Handbook Revision. Is that going to be addressed after closed session?
It could be, if you want to hold up.
Well, because there was nothing in the packet that really specified what the changes are.
Well, I mean, it gave us an idea. I didn't like that it says we want to change the handbook, and here's some general stuff, but not the actual language of the handbook we want to change. So I did go dig through the handbook to try to figure out which specific lines you want to change, but it's guesswork. I don't think it's complicated what you want to change at all. But where and exactly how, what the verbiage is, isn't entirely clear. But, I mean, they want to add the specific holidays, and it's generally clear. Do you think that we need to deal with closed session before discussing the handbook?
It depends on if what's discussed in the new agreement is dependent on these changes, because we can't vote on changes that aren't in effect yet. That's what I'm asking.
In reality, one of these items has been approved and approved in the police contract already. One of the other ones is part of the proposed contract with other.
To rephrase this and not to go into a sticky situation of discussing things we're not supposed to outside of closed session, if we were to make these changes as presented right now, before we go into closed session, would it be conflicting with anything that's currently in effect right now?
No.
Okay. It has the potential to be in conflict with something that may happen in the future?
No, because the contract was rescinded or closed in June.
Okay, so.
There is no contract.
Not no conflict now and no conflict in the foreseeable future. Doesn't really seem to wait unless.
No, but I also don't like making a decision about, like, remove language of longevity. Like, I don't know what that is, and that's always been a contentious part of contracts. So personally, I won't vote on making changes to the language. I don't know what the language is.
Would you like to fill us in on the longevity pay issue?
Sure. In the operators' union contract that expired for the DPW and the wastewater treatment plant, there was a section that described longevity pay that will be, if the future contract is approved as proposed, that is completely removed from the new contract. So.
So it's not giving them access to longevity pay, it's removing it?
Removing it.
Okay.
Because it's called out in the handbook, and it would need to be removed.
So there are no current non-union employees that are midstream on longevity? Is that correct? On longevity pay?
Well, it's part of the agreement. There is a longevity statement, but it wouldn't be tied to this part of the handbook.
Oh, I don't think either one of us misunderstood each other. I said any non-union employees.
Oh.
Then you said the agreement, and then you're making me think of, you're talking about a collective bargaining agreement. So any non-union employees that are midstream on longevity pay right now? So ruling that out. Can't ask that question outside of closed session. Never mind, skip that one.
Does it make sense just to go ask for questions in closed session that can be asked, and then come back to this topic?
I'm starting to think that we have some value.
Let's do that, then.
Table that until after closed session. Agenda item number four, General Complaint Policy and Complaint Forms.
As requested by council, included in your packet are the two complaint forms that were discussed for the two new complaint policies.
I want to jump to the second one, so I don't forget. So for the Ordinance of Enforcement and Municipal Services Complaint Form at the bottom, the last sentence, I think there's just an error there. Is it "will respond" and then "delete in" and just appropriately? It's on page 49.
Seeing where you're.
Page 49 I have as the, well, I'm sorry, page 48 I have as the, it's 50 overall in the packet, 48 numbered on the bottom right-hand corner. 49 is, oh.
The Ordinance Enforcement and Municipal Services Complaint Form?
I don't know why you guys have that. It's 49. I like PDF. That is the memo about the Homecoming Committee.
It's the page number 49, not what's in the PDF.
No, I know. That's what I'm saying. My PDF is labeled bottom of the page, 49. But, look, yours is 49.
Because we updated the packet this afternoon to include the Homecoming Committee Minutes of October 31st. That's why.
Something was.
So yes, it is the Ordinance Enforcement and Municipal Services Complaint Form. Currently says, "and will respond in appropriately."
Oh, as appropriately?
Yeah, as appropriately, or will respond.
Or just get rid of "in" altogether. "Will respond appropriately."
Yes.
Just strike "in." Yes. Did you have any other concerns, Mindy? I don't want to step on your toes if you have.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I have a few, and it's mostly just minor things. So we've gone to great lengths to make it possible to do this anonymously. We give them a box where they can check that they want to do this anonymously. And then, at the end of the form, we make them sign a certification with their name, which would just blow the anonymous part out. And we're just assuming that they understand they're not supposed to sign the certification, which is part of the form. There's just a minor edit to make this more clear. With the top checkbox that we have for submitting it anonymously, I would just suggest we have two checkboxes there. You know, and one can be, "I choose to identify myself and understand. The village made contact. Me. Signature required." Or we could put "Certification required," since we have the certification block at the end. The certification block can stay there. We just need to clarify. Because otherwise, I think it's just going to create confusion. And we could have the second box, which is, "I choose to submit anonymously," or "I wish to remain anonymous," the similar language to what we have. And, you know, we can keep that same language. I just think we need to have a clarification there, because right now it's a bit contradictory set up that way. The next one I had was, there's just a lot of things in our policy that aren't clear in this form. So I don't know if we have the expectation that people are going to go and read the policy and then find the form, because I don't know most humans to do that. They find the form, they fill out the form. It's pretty rare for them to also search out the complaint policy, read it first before submitting the form. In fact, it's usually they fill out the form, and when they haven't heard anything, then they start looking to see if there's a policy and why they haven't heard anything. So I would just like some of the language and clarifications that we make in the policy to be present in the form, not all the verbiage, just some of it, to make it a little clearer. So we have a, the, we had a clarification about the FOIA notice. And so I was just thinking we should add a privacy note. Email submissions may be subject to disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act, which can reveal sender information to better preserve anonymity. Consider mailing or sending it in sealed in person. We've hinted at it in this form, but it isn't just very clear. I think the table that we have of who to send to is excellent. I just think it should have the actual email addresses that are associated with it. I think that makes it much simpler.
Those email addresses are not listed on the form at all.
That's why I said I think it's good that it shows village manager or village council president. I think the associated emails that we discussed potentially setting up should be listed there. Look, if we're going to keep it as just the standard village president, the standard manager, if we're not going to make those new ones, okay. But I still think they should be new ones regardless. I don't care which one it's going to be. I think it should be listed there, because otherwise we're asking them to go outside of this form to search for a correct email address. It should just be listed there. It would just make it so much simpler. And again, that's why I think that they should be static email addresses, so that you don't have to continuously go and update this form every time we have an election or a change, or a death, or somebody moves. There are numerous times where we've had to replace certain positions, both administratively and elected positions. If we just make them static email addresses, it will always be safe, it will always be secure, and you do not have to come back and continuously modify and update this form. So that's why I think it should be static. But no matter what, somebody's email address should be there on the form to make it clear, so we're not asking them to go do homework to figure out how to submit the complaint. The other thing I was thinking is, you know, for a lot of forms like this, there's usually a, you know, for the office to complete only portion, like some sort of small corner where we have internal tracking on that form. So, you know, we could include a few small boxes maybe in a corner that would help internally for tracking of how these had worked. So, you know, witnesses' names, contact if known, documents, records attached, so we can have some checkboxes there. You know, we'd be able to actually say, you know, who it's received by, when, the method. There's just, there's some information that would probably make it easier for you guys to track. I have some suggestions on that. I just don't want to bore everybody with all those details. I think it would be good to have some of those internal tracking methods, you know, what the routing was, whether a conflict check was completed. Just those are pretty standard for a lot of forms like these. There's a small portion on one of the pages for internal tracking. Does anybody have any concerns or issues with doing that? I feel like it makes admin's job easier for tracing these.
I think I would leave it up to village admin, if they find it helpful.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking. Does anybody have any concerns about doing that, or?
My thought, I read in the lawyer's review that they placed something in there special, but I might be confusing it with another form. We will, now that, as we're discussing the actual finishing step here, we'll put some statement and some links in the beginning of the form about, there's a policy if you want to review it. This box is for internal tracking. We'll upgrade that on the posting site versus necessarily on the form. And then we'll have some way to track it. We don't have that yet. We haven't come up with that.
But then, okay. I love the idea about adding the link to the form and that information. What I was getting at is, you know, the way to track that. I'm just making a suggestion here. This is a very, very common practice to have a, you know, for office use only or admin use only portion of the form, where they're just, they indicate who it's received by, the date, the method, you know, conflict checks, things of that nature. It's usually a small corner of the form or a small portion of the form. I'm just suggesting that we get that out of the way by adding that now. But if you want to review other possible methods, it's fine. I just wanted to bring it up, because it seemed like a concern to me that you're likely going to run into. The submission method has a duplicated sentence fragment. The, God, where did I see that? Apologies.
Well, Stephen's looking for that. There are email addresses, villagemanager@elmontvillage.org and villagepresident@elmontvillage.org. Are those sufficient?
Well, village manager is already set up.
Yeah, there isn't a village president.
There is. There is. It's just not on the website, yeah.
Oh, okay. You've created one for it? Oh, okay. So that's, because I know he has his name for president right now. So this is a new one you created.
Village president, yeah.
Okay, so you've already created the additional.
So when you go live, are we notified with how to get to that box?
Correct.
Okay. But clarifies that. So if you've already created them, I'm assuming nobody else has an issue with creating the static ones, then it's already done, essentially. Okay. All right. I seem to find that fragment. I think that's basically all I had about the concerns about the form itself. The language, the revised language, I find excellent, so I'm happy with it. I just had a few concerns about the form that I mentioned.
Does any council have any other revisions or suggestions for the form or the language in the actual policy?
I have some questions on the ordinance enforcement part. I don't know. Are we getting to that next, or are we?
The ordinance enforcement?
Form.
Form? Yeah. Let's make sure we've got this completed, then we'll move on. So on the non-ordinance enforcement complaint policy, does anybody have any other questions or revisions? I would suggest then that we table the form until next meeting, until the updated revisions are completed. And then we would approve that then, if we're in consensus with that.
Pretty minor modifications here, aren't they? There were real substantive things that we're waiting on, do you think? I mean, unless you, because you want to see the internal tracking stuff, because otherwise it's.
I want to, yeah, I'd rather see the, I want to see the finalized form before I. If there was something of not substance, maybe, but. So if nobody else has any other questions on the. So if nobody else has any other questions on the complaint policy, non-ordinance enforcement, do we have consensus to table till next meeting to see the updated form and then approve at that meeting? Okay, the ordinance enforcement form, does anybody on council have any concerns about that? I know, Mr. Powell, you didn't.
So the first complaint policy is only, only applies to like village administration. Do we not need one for ordinance enforcement? A similar policy or is the form enough?
We did that policy first. Okay, we did that policy first. You were looking at the form going, it's kind of inadequate. Then the second policy, which is non-ordinance enforcement, came before us and we once again went, we kind of like to see a form, so they give us both forms.
So similar to the other complaint form, I think I would like to see some instructions like how to submit it, like you were saying on the previous form.
For the ordinance enforcement one?
Yeah, like if we, like, would we prefer to have them email it to the ordinance enforcement officer or mail it or I would assume similar methods of submission.
I think Dale's suggestion about the linking to the policy right in the form so that they don't have to do their homework and trying to figure out how it works.
Yeah, we should do that for both forms.
And my other suggestion is around at the bottom, asking if you'd like to be contacted after the complaint. Maybe just a, somewhere to select how you'd like to be contacted if you select yes. Because you can have phone number or email on there. Could be a text update. I don't know if that's possible, so. That's all I had.
Contact preference?
Yeah.
Anybody else on council in regards to the ordinance enforcement reform? We in consensus with Mr. Powell's suggestions? Okay. Then we will table for the changes for next meeting. That concludes the regular agenda. Now is the time on our agenda for public comment for any non-agenda item. Do we have any public comment for any non-agenda items? Being non-open discussion, homecoming committee bylaws. So at our October 7th meeting, we had a long, intensive, not from a negative standpoint, but a long, detailed discussion with the committee and what, and their suggested changes to the current bylaws. At that meeting, I had suggested that it gets sent to legal for revision. That got overlooked accidentally. There was a miscommunication, so it has not gone legal yet. But with that being said, council really never got a chance to discuss their concerns about all the points that were discussed in that meeting. We have that before us. So before we send these revisions to legal, does anybody on council have any concerns about parts of what was, any part that was discussed with the revisions that were presented at that meeting?
Fair way to put it is, there was a lot of back and forth discussion with the committee itself, but there wasn't council deliberation of it. You know, we didn't discuss it as a group. We did back and forth with them. And typically, we like to give them the opportunity to say their piece, but then we're supposed to deliberate without interruption amongst ourselves afterwards. We haven't really done that. I know that a large majority of these red lines, in my opinion, are okay. There's a few that I still don't agree with or I think should be slightly revised, you know, from their suggested form. If it's okay with council, I would just like to fly through all the ones that I think are just okay and find out if anybody has any objection to that or if they still think that that language is a problem. And then I could point out, that would get rid of 80 to 90% of the red lines. I think that we would be in agreement to send to legal for review. But there's a couple that I could then point out that I, why I still disagree or how I think it should be slightly tweaked. I think that's probably a pretty efficient way if council's okay with that.
I'm good with it.
Okay, so starting on page two, I'm skipping the red line on page one because that's one from that. I think we all know that I had some issue with, but we'll come back to that. So I'll just point out all the ones that are okay to me first and tell me if you disagree. But they wanted to delete section five heading entirely, capitalize officer and get rid of by appointment of village, instead say section four B. I'm okay with all those revisions. That seems fine. The next section where I think everything is just fine would be on page four of six. The any single expenditure, it says section, excuse me, article four, section one. They wanted to strike B there, any single expenditure exceeding 10%. I think after explanation, that makes perfect sense. That seems okay to me unless anyone else disagrees. Then the next entire section, two subcommittees. They wanted to delete the majority of that section, just say it will be established as needed. When they clarified they don't normally use subcommittees, that all seems acceptable. I have no issue with that. Next, under section five, under that same article, the if there is a grand marshal section, that seems applicable and fine. Under the following article, article six. It was a duplicative sentence. I can't believe we all missed that the first couple of times we went through it. Removing the duplication, fine. And that's pretty much all of them that I think are okay. The others, I have either a minor comment on or I disagree. I'd be happy to go through them, but I just want to make sure everybody else was okay with all those sections too. Again, clarification before we move forward on this, only because the date at the bottom is changed. It's just what brings mind to me. If, if we're going to make even just those revisions that we all disagree are okay, we are not amending these bylaws. That's, that's not going to be, it's not going to be a fair way to handle it for everyone else because then they have to read the original and then they have to read the amended to try to figure out what the current version is. I think it's just simpler for everyone and for future homecoming committees and future council members. It's just much simpler if we revoke our existing and we replace it with a new version. So there's always just one version to read. Every time we amend, they otherwise have to read every version to figure out what's changed and what's still the same. So I would just, again, I would recommend we revoke our existing bylaws, replace them with the new revised bylaws. But setting that logistical procedural thing aside, I'll point out the ones that I still disagree with. I, I know we were even, the last time we were discussing this as a group, we're getting into the minutia and definition of certain things like what would define comprehensive. And I just, I think it can be, if we leave gray area open to interpretation, two people are not always going to view that the same way necessarily, much less two groups of people, especially if there's any type of disagreement. So the event shall be scheduled with flexibility to prevent conflicts. And we had previously with other major village events, construction projects, things of that nature. We had a litany of broad concepts. Now we're leaving it to just the word conflicts. And I could easily foresee either side, council or homecoming committee going, well, that's not a conflict or define the word conflict because I don't agree that that's a conflict. I just don't like leaving it so broad and open to interpretation. I thought the original language, which was designed to give council flexibility with oversight of everything going on in the village, whether or not it should be rescheduled. I thought that that was appropriate and I still think that if the rest of council doesn't agree and you want to keep it with just the word conflicts, I'd urge you to reconsider. But that's not all I can do because I just don't think that that's. I think we're just asking for a potential future fight over what the definition of the word conflicts is. You know, for example, we have our fleece and banner update. They will absolutely have Eastern West St. Clair torn up during the timeframe that we just approved for them to have their homecoming in town. Maybe not because that schedule could change, but that's also the reason why we are supposed to view this. Now, if we were to take that, this is just hypothetical. I don't know this for certain, but if we were to take that back to our present homecoming committee and say, you know, this is a potential conflict, they're going to go, it is not a conflict because we don't want to do anything specifically on those streets. So we don't see it as a conflict. And we would look at it from potentially a larger picture going, yes, but our, two of our main roads through downtown are already going to be tied up. Traffic is already being congested. And now you want to throw a major event on top of that where we're already going to have difficulty with getting people around and with parking. Like, we have to look at some of the larger logistics. Their focus is on the event itself anyways. I just think we're supposed to be able to look at that larger scale. And I don't want to fight over what the definition of the word conflicts is when we do it. That's just what I think would be appropriate. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that topic? So.
I don't, I don't see an issue with leaving with other major village events in.
Leaving it in?
Yeah. It's fine.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so that's that one. My next one. So section, I'm sorry, article three, section one, sub A. All regular and special meetings must comply with Open Mission Meetings Act. The language itself is fine. I have no problem with that. I was just looking at it and going, isn't that probably, now that I'm looking at, isn't it? I was going to say it's more appropriate under two A, but I mean, obviously it's titled Open Meetings Act compliance. Now I'm just worried about the location of the language, but as worded, it's fine. I'm just wondering if there isn't, maybe we should be even just getting rid of Open Meetings Act compliance as a heading and combining it with section two. But that's probably just me being overly nitpicky. Otherwise, I'm okay with the language revision. What I don't understand is why we have a completely separate sentence underneath that has not got a sub and that is not about Open Meetings Act. Our social media policy is not open, open meetings act related. It is an internal policy reviewed and passed by this board that is not required by the state, which is the Open Meetings Act. So it's just, A, it shouldn't even be under this heading. We did not have it under this heading. We had it under the following heading, under section two. Also, if we're paying attention here, what the difference in the language is, is we said the same thing we require all other boards to do. It's just for them to formally adopt and comply. And that's what we have done to the part four, the DDA, the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, quite literally everything under the village umbrella. We submit the adopted and passed social media policy by this board and we submit it to all of our subsidiaries. We make them put it on their agenda, read, discuss, acknowledge and formally adopt and now comply with it. This just says shall comply. It's under the wrong heading and we have intentionally removed the language to formally adopt it, which makes it very easy in the future for them to say, whoa, I didn't know. Yeah, you didn't know because you refused to formally review, discuss and adopt it. You just said, I shall comply with a thing that I never even properly read. I don't like that. I think, again, uniformity and consistency is the best way for us to govern. I think we ask the same thing of this board that we would ask of all of our boards. There, this is, this is a village board for which we are responsible. I think it should just be consistent, so.
I don't remember us like discussing that we were redlining that at our, at the last meeting with them. This is just what they had submitted.
This is what they submitted and Paul did go pretty much line by line through them. So we did, we did discuss it, although.
We didn't like have consensus that we were going to remove that particular section.
I agree. I, and I think even at that time, I didn't recognize that we had removed formally adopt.
Well, when you're in a live meeting discussing bullet points, but your point makes total sense. It doesn't belong under the Open Meetings Act and it should just remain where it's at in section two. So I would, I would suggest we strike the line.
The addition.
The addition in section one and on red line, unblock the red line in section A of section two.
I agree. Section C.
Well, before we move to section C.
I'm sorry, section C.
Do we have consensus on that?
Apologies.
Okay, go ahead.
Sub C there under that same heading.
Mr. President, I wanted to mention that I'm, you know, when I read this, each one of them says it calls out the type of meeting, regular, special. What if we start having impromptu or executive committee or, you know, Thursday meetings that then don't, don't get followed, we don't follow the Open Meetings Act because they're not one of those two listed? Why don't we take the description out and just call them meetings?
Well, because it's.
Have to be one or the other, don't they?
No, I mean, he's, he's right and I understand the distinction you're making. But let's clarify, the, we have had, you keep calling it executive session. We call, we call, you know, closed session typically, right? I know, for example, the DDA has, you know, executive meetings, but it's, it's only three members, meaning that it doesn't have to be OMA required because they don't, they, they never get to the point where they actually have enough people in the room. And I think that that's the distinction here is, first of all, there's only four members. So if even two of them are together, then that's, that's not necessarily a problem. The second that there's three of them, then, well, then now they have a majority and so now it needs to comply with OMA. I, to say all meetings might be a bit of a stretch with a four-person committee where they do not have to be OMA compliant. But I fully understand your meaning. If it was a larger board meeting more often, I would be willing to go deeper down that rabbit hole. I, I was going to point out something similar to that with, with sub C. It, if, for example, says special meetings are rescheduled, regular meetings must be posted at least 18 hours in advance. Okay, so what's our timeframe for publication if it's just a regular meeting when you're supposed to post it the first time? Because this is now creating a timeframe for posting of rescheduled regular meetings, but there is zero timeframe for a regular meeting.
Which is 18 hours.
So why did we have to change it to?
For OMA, right? Eighteen hours.
Which is why I disagree.
For regular meetings, usually they're adopted the year, at the beginning of the year.
See, my point is we, we went from meeting notices 18 hours to special meetings or rescheduled regular. Okay, so what about just regular? We don't have a timeframe at all. We've gone for the two unusual ones and not explained the actual normal one we expect to happen. I just, I think we need to clean that up.
Well, is that answered in section one B?
I would hope so, but in this circumstance, it didn't happen, right? My point is, is that it's just, there's a breakdown in the intention, spirit and intent of what we drafted and then the practical application. This is our opportunity to fix it. So I'm just, I'm pointing out a giant gaping hole that I think we should probably plug before we go any further.
So how would you reword C? Just take it back to meeting notices must be posted?
I, I think that's most appropriate. You could leave it as special meetings and regular meetings. There's a hypothetical where that works, right? But right now, in a situation where B was never met because the committee wasn't formed at that time. So they're, we're boxing them into now they're in violation of sub B anyways and it's not their fault. And then they can comply with C if they ever do it. But I think it needs to be modified. I, I don't, I don't want to hog the microphone, so if anybody else has any suggestions.
Couldn't we just strike out B then?
And then have zero way for requirement for a timeliness of posting of regular meetings?
Oh, we could cover it in C.
Okay.
Cover all meetings by 18 hours.
So as, as Ms. Kiesler was just pointing out, we typically post our entire meeting schedule.
That's not a requirement.
It is the standard. You're right, it's just standard operating procedure, not just for us, for most municipal boards. I don't know that we want them to be posting all their annual meetings that they expect to have, which these are in ordinance.
Well, in their defense, they said the way the committee works and they, they meet.
When they can.
They meet when they can. That section B is, with a four-member committee is almost hogtying them to, into dates that they can't confirm that they're going to have. into dates that they can't confirm that they're gonna have.
So would everyone here be comfortable with, no matter what type of meeting it is, they only give you eighteen hours notice? Is everyone comfortable with that?
I just want to make note of, uh, in the October thirty-first minutes, it says that it was decided on second Tuesday of the month at seven PM to hold their meetings.
It, it, but what I'm saying is this is still potentially problematic, right? Uh, and, and I think the suggestion, um, the council member Paul made is, it, it's acceptable to me. I'm okay with eighteen hours notice for these meetings. I, 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 I'm okay with that. And then I think we've, we've plugged this gap. We don't put the next board in a potential bind of having to have them do it much in advance.
So we strike B and.
Go back to just meeting notices.
Meeting notices, okay.
I, I think that that's, it's clean, it's simple, it's easy to follow. It doesn't give us something to gripe about and, and it makes it more flexible for them. I think that they would like that.
Is there really any consensus with that change?
So I'm on the next one that I've spoken about numerous times. Um, shall be recorded and we had livestreamed for the public. Um, not to beat this horse to death, but we're setting a bad precedent. If we remove the livestreamed for the public, it's a slippery slope. I think things get out of control. It doesn't work well per our clerk treasurer and we can't, cannot work efficiently with YouTube. We cannot livestream. Everyone has to watch it later. And to be honest with you, I'm shocked we would even consider it or why we would. There isn't a single other board under this village apparatus that we would even consider it or allow it. Don't know why we would do it in this circumstance.
I think you're speaking maybe for yourself. I don't think you could speak for the entire board on saying we, what we would or wouldn't do. I just want to clarify that.
Okay, that might be true, but let me rephrase with saying this. We have a social media policy that requires it that, as I covered earlier, we may be submitted and formally adopted by all of our other boards. So unless we're talking about this council would want to consider violating its own social media policy, then I think that that statement might be accurate. It, it, it's an inference. I'll, I'll agree to that. It's an inference. But we have a social media policy that requires it, that we submit it to every other board and made them formally adopt it and comply with it.
And if all boards are being televised now live stream, why would we change that policy for one?
Park Board is not.
Park Board is under two different.
It's true, but ironically, it was submitted to them and they did formally adopt it. They've just failed to follow it, like their own bylaws or the ordinances.
So if every other board minus the park board is, is, is livestreaming their meetings, why would we, why, why would we consider an exception on this one? Um, especially with the, a lot of transparency within the community over the last couple of years. I guess would be my question.
And OMA violations.
Council.
I agree. Steve, I thought about it more and more. I agree.
So doesn't the park board meet at the park in the summer months?
At times.
And are those?
Not this summer, no.
Those aren't recorded or?
None of them are currently.
But we're talking about every other, we're talking about every other board that is under the blanket of village jurisdiction. The park board is a shared jurisdiction between township and, and, um, and village. So we don't have the full authority to dictate that to them. Whereas this committee falls under the umbrella of the village, the transparency of the village, and there's no reason why the, the, the meeting should not be livestreamed like every other meeting.
We have, um, our analysis from Kim about our different options. And as long as the meetings are held here, it seems like it's easiest to use the same system that we currently use. So that's correct. You know, if there's a restriction on only playing audio, then it, it makes sense for them to use the same procedure that's already available. Now, I, I think we wanted to try and take into account their comments and look to see if there was a viable solution. And Kim did that. And the one that we have set up is the best one. So, you know, I, I appreciate that you did that and, um, it's the option that we have.
So council's in consensus that meetings should be livestreamed per our policies.
I think I've got a few of my other ones. Um, under Article five, section one A, um, this was, was the language that I was kind of referring to earlier on, or, or our first thing that we were, we were discussing. Taking into consideration other community events, projects, construction, and public safety factors, because I kind of felt like those were the relevant categories that should be considered by council in approval of a date. Um, it, it's, I understand those could be broad, but they were also kind of, I was trying to, in truth, narrow it to not just because we just don't feel like having it or we're trying to, you would have to actually have another event or project, construction, or a public safety factor, a real concern, not just the broad word conflict. So that's kind of the language that I had preferred. So I don't like striking it, but I can live with it if we had the slightly expanded version we discussed up above. But I'm just trying to point out the difference between the two. Cause the, the one we did before, you know, it just ended at conflict. And, and obviously this one is a, a little bit more clear because this conflicts with, what we just agreed to, 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 to put back in was with other major village events. This is a little bit more definitive and clear, not only for council, future council members, the future homecoming committee members. I thought it was more clear as to the types of things we would take into consideration in picking a date. So I think it's, I think it's fair to both parties, but if.
So from the homecoming committee's perspective, uh, you and Wayne since Pete's not here, that was put in as a protective measure for homecoming. And I was getting the interpretation from them that they thought it was restrictive. So.
I, I, I truthfully could make an argument either way.
Right.
You could, it, look, it's language and these bylaws you could, you could use as a tool to do damage or to protect it. That, that's, that's true of all bylaws. You could use it to be overly restrictive and it's all in your interpretation, which is why I don't like, I don't like vague explanations of what you're getting at because that's what makes it easier to turn it into a weapon. So I thought this expanded definition is not so that we can use it against them. It's so that way you would actually narrow the gap on what you could try to argue, I don't want you to have the date you're suggesting. They're coming to us with a date and these would be the categories we would have to find or consider a problem with in order to reject it. Not just because, you know, I don't feel like it. I, I woke up in a bad mood today, you know? Um, I was trying, I, I thought it was more fair, but like I said, I, this is not the hill I want to die on. I think this is better. If you guys are happy with the, the language in the beginning of the bylaws, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it alone.
I feel like it should be in one place or another. Like right now, it's sort of, there's two different. Definitely if we leave this one in and then the other one in, then there's two different. So it's either like one or the other.
I agree.
I think the other one's more important.
The, the first or the second?
The first.
The first one is more important? You, you think this expanded definition is potentially problematic or just?
I don't think it's problematic, but I think it can be confusing like many, so it should, we should, it should be in one place or another.
Oh, no, I, I totally agree. I want just one and that's why I'm only pointing out the comparison between the two. I, I totally agree, just one. I, I'm just telling you which one I like more and trying to get feedback from the rest of you as to which one you like more to.
So do you want to change this wording to the other locations that we were asking?
First of all, just which language do we like better? Then, then we can pick a, an appropriate place for it. Um, we, we wanted to, uh, you know, in our drafting process, when we were coming up with this, it was nice to point out the when it would happen in the purpose in the very beginning. But this heading that we are under is specifically designed for the when, right? So it's, I think it is more appropriate here. If I was going to choose between locations, I wouldn't put it under purpose as I, as a when it happens. I would put it under, you know, this section, um, because it's, it's the event scheduling and approval.
So you'd strike the entire, this event should be scheduled with flexibility to prevent conflicts and from section two? And then just re-add the language in section five?
My personal opinion is that's, that's the cleanest and best way for everybody. Um, I don't know if anybody else agrees though.
Council?
I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. As long as it's in one place.
Totally agree with that.
Either way.
And strike it from section two and add it to, then, then, strike the.
Stephen would like to know which major events or the expanded definition.
In section two, in section two, it reads, the event should be scheduled with flexibility to prevent conflicts with other major village events.
Strike that.
We strike that.
And under Article five.
Five.
Section one A.
Section one A.
We're going to say what?
The homecoming festival shall occur every five years on a date specifically approved by the village council, taking into consideration other community events, projects, construction, and public safety factors.
I don't have a chance.
Anybody else?
Is everybody good?
Fine.
Good.
All right. Sub B, the very next one. Um, I just, I just want to point this out. We, it, I, I, I may have mentioned this earlier, alluded this earlier. I intentionally put the word comprehensive in there because once we, we, we contemplate striking the word comprehensive, we get a plan like we reviewed last time when they submitted a plan. It doesn't really tell us much. You don't have to have everything finite. I just think that it should be, here's a list of the types of things that we want to do, maybe some of the spots where we want to do them, give you some idea of what it's going to be. Um, so, you know, uh, I think we, removing the word comprehensive results in the version that we just got, so I think you need to be clear.
It's not to leave it in, I, yeah.
You, you just, just trying to give some guardrails here for, give me some information on some really, really broad generics, you know, so.
So we're keeping comprehensive?
I would keep comprehensive, yeah.
Okay. Um, one of my, I think it actually might be my final one. It is my final one. My final one I want to point out. I did not realize this at the time, or I, I would have, I would have brought it up, but the, um, let's see, it is under Article, it's still under Article five. Section three, sub B, they struck the word insurance. I understand why they struck the word insurance. Um, I disagree though, only because of stuff that I, I, I recently found out about this. So, um, for example, when the, um, Heritage Festival is put on by our DDA, they go on the village's general liability policy. For the most part, it's under the village's general liabilities policy. And I'm assuming that's exactly what Homecoming Committee is thinking too. It's going to go on your general liability policy. For the most part, that is true. However, there are some events and some things that Heritage Festival wants to do sometimes that are not covered by our general liability policy and they have to go out and seek and obtain their own insurance for it. Um, something that I was finding out this year, for example, bounce houses are never covered by any municipality's general liability policy. They specifically say they are excluded, they won't allow it. You know what we see at a lot of these events? Bounce houses. So, um, they have to go out and obtain their own insurance for certain things. Uh, so I don't think the word insurance should be removed. I think the word insurance should be there with a clarification. For example, uh, insurance not covered by the village's general liability policy, right? So if it's not covered by us, you need to obtain your own.
Yeah, I, I thought the discussion was because it was covered under section four is why it was removed from that particular sentence. So there's insurance and liability in section four? Under Article six.
Oh, okay. So Article six, section four. Um, well, so here's what I, I disagree, only because I think those are two different meanings.
Okay, I think that was just the discussion on why it was removed there was because it was thought that it was, because it was covered there. I.
So shall coordinate with the village manager to ensure adequate liability insurance coverage for all events. They need to tell him what types of events they want to have. He needs to make sure that they're covered so that they even have. Nowhere in here does it say that they shall obtain their own insurance if it's not covered by our general liability policy. And that's, that's kind of the only distinction I want to make here. I know that it's, it's, it's maybe being overly meticulous, but I just want to clarify because there's nothing in here that tells them to obtain insurance. It tells them to ensure that the village essentially has adequate coverage, um, which I still want. And I think ninety-nine percent of the time, that's what it will be. The village general liability policy will provide adequate coverage. Where it doesn't, we should clarify, they are to obtain their own insurance for events that are covered by that.
So, yeah, I don't think they had, was like, no, we're not obtaining insurance. I think it was just the thought that it was covered in another section. But I think it's fine to leave it, like, like unstrike it. I don't think anyone on that, on that side would disagree.
Okay, and, and again, to their benefit, I was, I was gonna add in, you know, so with insurance, and I was gonna add the words not covered by the village's general liability policy, just, just for clarification, so that way they don't think that they have to obtain insurance coverage for their entire event. Most of what they have will be covered by our general liability policy, but anything that isn't, that, that's on you.
Why don't we just put that all in?
Insurance and liability.
Yeah, and, yeah.
It's probably better.
Yeah, strike section three B, well, not.
Well, no, keep insurance there.
Keep insurance.
If you want to make the clarification, that's fine.
Clarify under insurance and liability.
That's, that's, that's perfectly fine with me. Uh, but we have to modify the language here. We could just add another sentence or something.
Under A, under, yes.
Yeah, section four A.
If you feel like there's something needed there, that's where I would put it.
Like, well, I do because ensure adequate liability insurance coverage for all events is, is again, and I, I know from speaking with the members of the homecoming committee, they're not obtaining insurance. They never have because they have the assumption, like most of these boards that put on these types of events would, that it is covered under your general liability policy. And I am trying to clarify because I know the DDA will need recently found this out. Not everything is covered by the general liability policy, which means you have to go seek your own insurance policy. So I just want to make that incredibly clear right up front so it's not a fight later.
Do you have language?
Okay, so the committee shall coordinate with the village manager to ensure the village's general liability policy provides adequate insurance coverage for all events. So that way you could, you could get the general liability policy language in there and then we would have to insert a new sentence that would say for all events not covered by the village's general liability policy, they must obtain their own, their, their own insurance coverage and adequate coverage, something to that effect. That way we could, we could keep the majority of what's there slightly modified to fit this purpose. Does that seem acceptable to everybody? Kim, did you get all that or do you want me to?
Just do that last part of the.
The second sentence. So, so there's two sentences in A and so we'll, we'll stick a sentence in the middle?
Yep.
Um, for all events not covered by the village's general liability policy, the committee shall obtain adequate liability coverage. And then that covers both. Everything that is covered, everything that isn't, they gotta get their own coverage. That, that's all of my lengthy nitpicking of the bylaws.
Anybody else like counsel? Going once? Dwight?
It was comprehensive.
Sorry, everybody.
So, so to be clear, now that we've done our revisions, can we send that to legal to get an opinion back for discussion at next meeting?
Thank, thank you.
Um, open discussion item number two, golf cart ordinance.
We, we didn't get any fancy memo. I don't know who's supposed to present this. It just, it just went straight from homecoming right into golf carts.
Dan?
Why the chief is here?
Chief?
Okay, after the last time we discussed the golf cart.
Okay, after the last time we discussed the golf cart ordinance as the first rough draft, it was brought to my attention that there was, in fact, another ordinance that I could consider that, some of the council members felt was a little better equipped for our needs. So I revised it to this current draft, so I was able to, I modeled it after that other ordinance, probably around eighty-five percent. So, something that I did remove one thing from the original draft because it didn't seem to be very popular, I guess, and that was the inspection of the vehicles as well as any type of registration fee. But I did leave in there the description of what is required, just because I didn't feel the general public may or may not go search for the actual Michigan compile law on what is required on it, so I just left that part in.
And I think you, you heard our comments earlier, we don't want them to have to search out multiple documents to figure it out and do homework on it. I think leaving in there that description is excellent, so. Come on, guys, I can't be the only one who has a bunch of stuff to say about this. All right, section five, number two, I think he meant tail lamp, not tail lap. So it's just a minor grammatical, and that's an easy one. So if we could correct that. Am I correct that we had, we had discussed seatbelts last time? Feel like we discussed, but I, I just don't remember where we landed on it, that we were, we were, we were wanting to include or not include seatbelts. I, I mean, I notice it's, it's still absent here, I don't remember, do we, we have a?
I thought there was something about seatbelts in the previous version.
Correct, there was, there, there was a set, one online that was, if the golf cart was equipped with safety belts, they're going to be utilized. Correct.
If you have them, use them. I'm not, I'm not saying it's a requirement of like, you have to install them if they're not there, and if they're there and you refuse to use them, maybe you should take them out. But, um, I kind of feel like it's silly to, the equipment's there and we don't want to force you to use it. Any thoughts on that? Okay.
I don't know, weigh in your golf car.
No, yeah, I kind of, if you have it, fine, like, I think it's kind of moot, you know, it's like old cars that come to Elmont, have them, the old ones don't have seatbelts.
Right, and if you don't have it, you don't have it.
Exactly.
I think we have a large amount of statistical data about how seatbelts are, you know, generally beneficial to you staying alive.
Are you saying that they get penalized if they're not, or using their seatbelt if they haven't?
That's kind of where I feel like, why, you know.
Because, because why, why would somebody get penalized for not using it if they have it, if somebody that doesn't have it doesn't have to have it?
Exactly.
I think he just pointed out that's exactly how it works for motor vehicles now.
Exactly.
That's exactly how it actually works for motor vehicles now. If your, if yours does not have seatbelts, because it predates when they had seatbelts, you're not ticketed. But if I pull you over in your vehicle that's brand new that does have seatbelts and you're not wearing it, you're ticketed.
What, what cars do not have seatbelts that are still on the road?
Oh, geez, anything like-
Yeah, there's a lot, like, a lot. Did we hit a car show this year? If you went, seventy percent of them don't have seatbelts.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, A would remain consistent. This is, this is not a major sticking point for me, this is just my personal opinion, if you have seatbelts, you should use them. That might just be a personal opinion, I'm not saying it has to be in the ordinance, it just seems logical to me, but, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not stuck on that. I, if, if everybody else agrees, we can stick it back in, if, if not, I'm okay with leaving it out, if we don't want to push that issue.
Where would we stick it back in?
Nine on section five?
I think that's correct, yes.
Say section five, number nine. Well, so, it says equipment requirements, so that, I don't want it, it's not a requirement. It's not an equipment requirement.
Our previous language, hold on, hold on, our previous language, which is what I would suggest inserting there, and it, it would still work there, was, oh, God, what was the phrase, it was, um, "If factory-equipped, rear passenger seatbelts," I think is what we had before, "rear passenger seatbelts, shall be worn while the court cart is in motion." We could change that back to, "if equipped with," you know, "seatbelts shall be worn." We, we can, we could model it somewhat similar.
I think it should go in section four, operation on golf cart, because some of that has safety.
There's me, too.
Yeah, I think section four.
It works with section four, I'm happy with that.
I did have a question for number eleven, that this section does not apply to police officer, village officials, employees, operation, we don't have to follow the same rules? I do have a question.
During, like, events, just like Heritage Fest, we had-
Where we drove down the park path because you've got to put cones out to identify the cars. From the park to the high school to do that, it takes three hours.
Or DT, or when DPW was out changing trash, picking up trash during the events.
Okay, what rules, aren't they following, like, oh, operated on sidewalks?
Sidewalks is one, there was-
Are we having fifteen-year-olds drive golf carts around?
There was, I think why it matters is because there was, there was a registration requirement, a fee, inspection, all these other things, and I think that's probably more what they had in mind that wouldn't be breakable.
They can't, they shouldn't be operating them, like, unsafe.
Right, I, I was going to say, I think what-
No, but like, we drove down, we drove down Kidder, and it was, it was early on a Saturday morning, so we drove down using the bike path, but if a bike or a walker were to came, I would have pulled up to the side.
Okay, so that's number two. Well, I think what she's asking at is, out of the remaining eleven, which one would you not want to apply to them?
Right.
Because it, when it, when it did have registration requirements, inspection fees, all those other things, then you didn't want this section to apply to those people, I get it. And I do agree with you, there are certain places that they're going to be able to drive now where everyone else can't. But in looking at this, what else? Because I, I don't know if any of the remaining eleven should apply to police officers, village officials, employees, contractor, I mean, so we want them to be in excess of thirty miles an hour? They, they don't have to obey to all sections pertaining traffic in Michigan, you know, but like, the rest of it, I agree with what she's saying. Makes sense that it should remain applicable to everyone, no matter what your position. But now how do we, how do we square that circle? Yeah. You'd have to remove number two and number eleven from this section. Keep the rest as is, and you'd have to have a new portion, because if, you could do section four A, you could do section four B, and then you'd be able to dump number two and what is now number eleven under its own. We're just saying it doesn't apply to that.
Right.
Or, or-
It's a chief to Elmont for that revised draft.
I could sure try.
I, I've got some ideas for you, but. Want to do that? Keep it applicable to everybody but those individuals for the rest of them, I think only that one makes sense.
So do we, do we want to have that section revised and brought back to us?
I would.
Okay. Anything else?
Section four, for the operation, there was, somewhere in here I had a quick note about, grammar, just one sec, trying to find it. I think we, yeah, it's, it's obey by all, I think we just wanted obey all, it's just a grammatical change there. It's in section four is what my note says, I'm trying to find you the exact line, one second. Yeah, yeah, so, actually, section four, number four. "The operator of a golf cart shall obey by all sections." Uh, I think we just want obey all sections. So, um, that was one small one. The section five, and another little grammatical one. Golf carts shall not be operated at speeds, I think we wanted exceeding fifteen miles per hour. Yeah, current double negatives, a, a bit clunky. But we, we were all pretty happy with just no night operation before, right? We're all, we're all satisfied with that, I know I was, we don't, we don't have that as an ongoing issue, okay. So, we discussed a pretty heavy insurance floor of three hundred thousand. Anybody have any concerns about that?
No complaints, so it really isn't that much on top of the policy, correct?
Same thing, it's like five, ten bucks, you know?
I'm not, I'm not-
Is that the lip, is that the dollar amount?
Kind of standard, yeah.
Yeah, as I was saying, I'm not, in truth, I'm not even really concerned about the premium. I'm more concerned about us forcing that level of coverage. I think it's appropriate, so I want to make sure everybody else agrees, because it, it's, it's a, it's a large requirement, I mean, it's, it's more than some people are going to have on auto. You know, a lot of people are getting two fifty, five hundred for auto, but I, I'm, I'm okay with this requirement, I think it should be that.
If there was a big sign on the parking book, I'd be worried about it, but if it's not that big, but you had another parking book, you might as well be covered. If you're, if you're willing to drive it around town, you can have that coverage.
That's all I have.
Anybody else on counsel?
Equipment requirements, like, one, we say at least two headlamps, do, I'm just saying headlamps in general, because some of them have just one big one, or they have like an L, like, it's-
Who has a Cyclops? I want to-
I was just, you know, again, do we want to make it more generic?
I've honestly never seen the one with just one headlamp, so I wasn't, didn't even know to think of it like that. So here's my question, does that leave you with, with, with a, I have one burned-out headlight, and you just put one headlight requirement, so now they're fine?
Yeah, that's, that's the law, that's Michigan compile laws to have two.
Operated on village streets, you get two. If you, if you have a Cyclops, you need to slap another light on there.
Get one of those sticky ones and you can turn.
Anybody else? We have consensus on the mentioned changes?
Is there, so, at first we saw registration fee, there's no registration fee for this, how do we feel about registration fee?
I mean, it seemed to be a deterrent, and we're talking about, when we were talking about our ORB ordinance, we did things a little bit differently there, too, and we were talking a lot about, we want to leave a lot up to officer discretion in whether or not to ticket in these situations. So, there's going to be a requirement for equipment, they can do an inspection if they pull you over for, for, for any probable cause reason. If they feel like there's a violation, they have discretion whether or not to issue a ticket, and then punishment is going to be at the discretion of, of the district court judge. I think we, oh, I'm only saying in, in what we went through for the ORB ordinance, I think this would be similar. I, I know it would have been nice to have registration fees just so we can get an inspection to make sure they're road legal first, but we aren't requiring it with anything else. I did not find that in other communities, it would probably be very unpopular, and really just kind of a deterrent from using them at all. It would also obviously be nice to be able to generate a little bit of revenue that's going to go along with-
Cover the administrative cost of-
Sure, but if we post this, what administrative cost is there if there isn't an inspection? There's just police enforcement, right?
Um, just the, for issuing decals, hold on, that's not very expensive, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, and what, wait a minute, what decals are we issuing? Which, which decals? I'm sorry, I'm, I don't remember that part.
Decal, a sticker displayed on every registered golf cart within the village.
Yeah, so.
So if we're just, you know, it's just cost of doing business, that's what it is.
I don't know Richmond charges, but yeah, that's what they do, and they make it on that windshield just so you could see it. So I think like, to your point, it just covers really just the-
Right.
Decal price and-
Right, but if we're just going to eat that cost, I mean, that's fine, I just wanted to ask the question, whether, whether we do want to do that, it's probably not going to make or break the police budget.
Richmond doesn't charge for it, right? I mean, I, I remember reading theirs, and they didn't have a, a fee for it, they're probably just eating that cost. Of course, they are a city a lot larger than ours, so.
You could start with no registration fee if it does turn into a lot of hours, reevaluate?
It's a good beat. It could be added in the fee schedule anytime.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I would think you would have the most say about this as to how admin is going to have to spend their time.
You were pretty adamant last time around that you wanted no, low fines or no fines, that sort of stuff, so. Again, if we see that it becomes oppressive or work at all, then we can assign a fee based on the time it takes.
Right, I didn't know what, but fines to me is different than, than we have, we're requiring a registration process that requires you to do work, and I wanted that to be covered. To me, that's, it's just different than actual penalties for bad behavior.
What's the penalty if you don't do it?
The penalty for it not being registered?
First offense is fifty dollars.
So, we talked about a tiered program for doing it that way, but what I'm getting at is, not registering is a fine. I'm saying for everyone who does register, you have work to do, and I just, not trying to leave you in a lurch, so. I, I'm okay with the, leave it without, and if it blows up and becomes a very popular thing, that we could adjust it to our fee schedule. I'm okay with that.
Anybody else? Consensus with all the discussed changes?
So, next is first reading?
Next is, next is brought back with a new revision. That concludes our open discussion. We'll do council member comment and manager comment before closed session, but student, you've been here for a couple hours, you can come up, get your papers signed. For your patience, okay. Enjoy the discussions, have a nice evening. Before closed session, council manager comment, Mr. Kerberson, do you have anything to bring to counsel? Chief Foss?
No sir.
Court Treasurer Kiefer? Councilmember Glasson? Councilmember Schneider?
How, how, how is the color matching of the sidewalks being dealt with down there?
As close as possible, we-
I three blind mice, or?
We kept Angela as our consistent decision-maker on the color of the concrete. They searched out the original color, they matched it as best they could, then they expanded their area to make things more ADA accessible, and then they reassessed the color of the concrete and came up with what's there now.
And then they reassessed the color of the concrete and came up with what's there now. Again, I, I didn't weigh in on it. It was 100% DDA and that's what we have. And they, again, it was done at least three times, so.
Last council meeting, you brought up an issue that you had with, with meeting minutes submitted by one of our boards. Did that get addressed? Meeting minutes? You had an issue with meeting minutes that have been submitted, um, and, and problems with it and we never really, I, I don't know if you got that addressed or not. You brought it up in your comment at the last meeting.
Must have taken care of it, because I.
Not, not aware of it still being an issue. Good. I'm all right.
Not on my list.
Okay.
President Prost and Stoffler?
Switching. I wanted to, um, just update you all on happenings at the park today. Um, we worked with American Tree to purchase and plant a variety of trees and flowering shrubs at the park. So this is an effort to continue with our park beautification project. The trees were selected mostly natives or cultivars, which are close to natives, um, to provide wildlife habitat, food, as well as where they're located, to continue to, um, kind of shore up the, the bank area, as well as, um, hopefully absorb more water that collects in the area that typically ponds when we get overflows into the park area. So we're really hoping to kind of help dry up that and soak up more water, um, as it floods into the park. Um, and, you know, I hear the concerns about park board not, uh, live streaming, um, the meetings. And we'll bring that back to them and, um, you know, assess where we're at with that. I believe the issue came about is that there was no one trained on the system, how to use it, having proper access. So, um, I'll bring that back to board and perhaps we can select someone who will, who can get the appropriate training and access to the system. Unless there's any questions about park, that's all I have.
Council member Paul?
What's that?
Council member Bill.
What's that?
May I move the motion to go into closed session?
I will make the motion that we enter into closed session in accordance with section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, being public act 267 of 1976 for strategy and negotiation session connected with negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
Support.
Motion by council member Schneider, as stated on the record, supported by President Prost and Stoffler to go into closed session. We'll call.
Howell?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Stoffler?
Aye.
Blasser?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Dyke?
Aye.
Good evening. Aunt Jamie, she told me to tell you her oldest is just starting youth group. And isn't coming, isn't coming back, saying she's having as much fun as Jamie remembers.
Awesome. That's awesome.
Take care.